My clock.
Forty-seven.
Six forty-seven.
Okay, I'm gonna, this is Jen. I'm going to call the meeting to order at six forty-seven P M on Wednesday, the nineteenth of November. This is the meeting of the White Lake Township Library Board of Trustees. First thing we do is our Pledge of Allegiance.
I collect the allegiance.
It's live.
Have the United States aware. Next, we call it.
It's stands.
One nation, my God. He did this so.
They're.
They just saw all.
Okay, Karen, go to roll call.
President Jennifer Schultz.
Present.
Vice President Paris Chatter. Treasurers, what have you renewed?
Present.
Secretary of Defense. Trustee Maggie Naal.
Present.
Trustee Lynn Womser.
Present.
The authority, Mr. Stevenson and Assistant Director Amy Rosing are also here.
Okay. And then can I get someone to approve the agenda with the maybe some kind of change that will add in speakers as they get here?
Well, we get an approval motion, you know, we can discuss the amendment. Um, I move to approve the agenda.
One second.
Okay. All in favor?
Oh, I wanna.
Comment.
You wanna, you wanna do a little discussion, we'll move, we'll amend it.
Uh huh.
Alright, so I move to amend the presentation of Anthony Noble and David Forsmarke to um, old business.
Okay. Second.
One second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Sounds good. Four yes votes. Alright, no public or public comments. No presentations. Move to business.
Move to approval of the minutes.
A second.
Eric, Bill, all in favor?
Aye.
Four yes votes. Okay. Uh, for President's report, all I have is that I brought an apple, salt and cream apple pie for everybody in honor of Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Have any of it you want as you as your hunger persists. Alright, you have anything, Eric?
I have the report.
Okay. Secretary Carrie?
I have nothing to say.
Treasurers' report, Gwen.
Um. Do you have the um, Finance Committee?
I do. I have a certain, I guess, absolutely. And then I think she put them in everyone now, wasn't it? Yeah.
Go at the back. At the back, I think. After, after the stats, usually, I guess. She has at the back.
It's a part of strategic tales.
Thank you.
But we did have lots of strategic words. There are two different versions of it.
Right, obvious.
She emailed about two different rods, you would come back, so that, and you just weighed on one, so how you did. Thank you.
I don't think I, I don't remember seeing that email. Bear with me, President, please. Gwen, do you want us to wait until and pull the presentations back up? For our guests?
Because on the fourteenth. With the two options.
Okay, because she was considering using a different CD. Um, but don't we usually do the alright. It's not under our business? And it usually is to, to approve a C D, right?
Yeah, we usually do it on the treasure.
We didn't really had approval last month? No, I don't think we, I think we did it a month before. Alright, I apologize. Um. But I'm looking for the exact wording. We wrote it up.
Oh, it's on.
Okay.
Where are we at?
We're at the Treasurers' report and uh, I'm trying to figure out what I'm doing.
Okay, that's cool. I just didn't hear anybody say that we were skipping the other show.
Someone gives.
Well, we can, if you can pass with the report and we can um, talk with our, our guests and then I can go back to Treasurers' report. That's what I asked, you wanna do that? Please, okay. Then, does anybody care? Okay. Thanks, and then we won't be taking up their time. Okay.
Can I just say, based on the purpose of minutes that I can move moving presentations to time of arrival?
Yeah.
Sounds good. And for discussion. I just couldn't. I just put in this. Next field, so.
Who's gonna go first? We've got Anthony and um, Dave both on the agenda.
Yeah, it's a good thing you showed up when you did, because I'm doing all this.
Yeah, you would have been.
First. You bet I am.
They still don't understand what people said here. And this, and this second comment. What is, what is the interest rate on another C D you have to do with um, like Michigan? The second.
I think it was Anthony and Charles. On like other, other things. I mean, it's how we see.
But they don't match.
But no, let's say that, but I think.
So you're gonna go first, Anthony?
Sure.
Okay, we're, I'm going with.
I would say.
Right there. Feel free.
There's another one.
Okay, back to the meeting.
Thank you.
Our guests are here, we're, Anthony's going to present first on the use of the library as polling location.
Good evening, uh, members of library board, it's a pleasure to be here, see how fair season is. Is, is always. Um, earlier this year, we spoke, uh, I spoke with the Library Director, um, Steve, Mrs. Stevenson about um, having a polling site here at the library. And I know we had visited that option a few years ago, uh, when the voting became um, an option which we share with Highland Township. And we utilize that uh, to the two communities to um, so it's not putting such a burden on just White Lake Township, but we're sharing that service. And the reason why we chose that site at the time was that they had a generator for the ninety-eight and kind of voting. We also, because of current legislation, when the polling sites, I just get everybody up to speed, were uh, two thousand nine hundred ninety-nine per precinct. We had currently had thirteen precincts about two years ago, which was a congressional election acquaintance, uh, which was called our thirteen congressional split, which came into the far northwest corner of White Lake Township, literally on one of the mobile home parks or a couple of streets. So actually, we do have two congress uh, uh, women that served as our um, House of Representatives. That being said, the law changed and if the polling sites went up to four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine, which was enabling us to reduce the precincts. And that is due to, as a, as a savings to the taxpayers, because we have a contract through open county which will, we use our election systems. And that, those machines run about eight to ten thousand dollars, so we haven't got the price on those just for the, the tabulators. So we haven't got that uh, that yet in the county, but we will be most likely about ninety-five percent sticking with our. And um, so we were redistricting to down to nine precincts, and what we'd like to do is utilize the library for one of our polling sites. Now, I know one of the concerns speaking with Mrs. Stevenson um, was a generator, the library didn't have a generator, generator, well, a lot of our precinct sites, like churches, um, they don't have generators, so we have the.
Polling places, and we do have a generator.
Well, I'm using like Grace, for example.
Okay, they don't have.
They don't, and then the um, I can uh, read off, I believe it's Presbyterian Debbie, like, she's a pastor up there for church, does not, but with our, with our tabulators, we have a battery backup on those. But per se, if we did have, we're able to utilize this fine facility, we would um, bring in, if we needed a generator, we had generators at the township, we could bring one on the court. But I don't, we, since I've been there, we do not have that, I've not had a site go down. If it does, in our, our precinct chairs, they, they will go to the manual procedure with the poll books and such as that, you know, using that, the old school, that's way to, to. So, the reason why we didn't select this site or couldn't is we didn't have a generator here, but we're utilizing for nine-day in-person voting, so that's why we stuck with that.
So this would only be a polling station for one day?
One day.
For one day?
One day.
One of the concerns, because we don't have generator, if we lost power, we still have to, and it's, it's a public entity, we, we have to allow people to use um, you know, basic things like the restrooms, which if we don't have power, we can't, we, we don't have that at that activity. So I don't know how, if you have other polling precincts, that, you know, I just don't know how you deal with that if you don't have power, that's our biggest concern.
Yeah. Since I've been elected in twenty-two, we've had, and had that, that happen. I mean, in extreme case of emergency, we had to, we would, we would call Brent Hills, uh, or one of the uh, outdoor sanitary services, and we could rent the porta potties. And if that happened, we'd have to do it at the other sites as well, just haven't had that.
So that would be responsibility.
It would, it would be the responsibility of clerk's office to run budget, the elections. So that, yeah, it hasn't happened since I've been here. Knock on, anything can happen. Um, and then with the new township, as you guys have seen the progress, going next door is gonna be a beautiful site. Please fire in the township offices. Um, we're gonna have a couple polling sites here as well, we're gonna move it out of Dublin Senior Center, and we're gonna be able to have it there, which they will have generators there. You know, obviously, you know, you say their um, facility and uh.
And you continue to have one here.
We would continue to have one here. So we have it close, close by now, I'm not saying in the future we can't have a third there, because we have a lot of space. But as, you know, as we're mapping it out, the, and Jillian, uh, many people here know Jillian London, her senior election specialist, we're very fortunate to obtain her through another community, and she's done tremendous amount of work. We have um, contact cards with the voters' information. And right now, we're in the process of going one by one reassigning it, so it's a pretty tedious task. Uh, but yeah, we spent a lot of time over the last nine months, you know, pre-organization.
So I don't know how the, um, all the voting works on a, you know, on a given day of an election, so if you had a catastrophe, an actual catastrophe, added facility, is, is there a process to move that home to another facility?
Now, I mean, I'm, again, we've never had that happen since, since I've been here, and I've not heard of it fast. Um, I I, I don't foresee that happening, but if, if we had to, if there was a catastrophe, yes, we'd have to come up with some type of arrangement. But I've not heard of that, or had, had that happen thus far. Uh, sort of that.
Please state your name.
There was a power failure, you remarked that, let's be safe.
Correct.
So we've still operated polling facilities most of this?
Yeah, through the, if you don't, we go back to manual procedures, which we have. Yeah, knock on wood. Set doesn't happen.
Andy, I got three questions for you. Currently, how many locations do we have?
Thirteen.
We have thirteen. How many locations?
So we have to go through. So, the Dublin Centers, there's two precincts there, and Grace Church, there's two precincts there.
And St. Pat's, that's.
And St. Pat's, there's two precincts there.
How many do you have at this Dublin Center? You only have one.
Seven.
You have one at the Dublin Center, right?
In Dublin, no, we have two.
Wait a minute, we're talking about two precincts?
The Dublin, the Senior Center.
You thought it was just precinct one?
No, there's two precincts in there, so.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Is it, no, there was, I'm sorry.
I've worked that precinct before.
There's one.
There's one.
But we did have two when the school was torn down.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's.
Alright, I was gonna say, I've worked that precinct before, and there were two at one time.
So.
Was when the school was torn down.
Okay.
Okay, so.
And then Grace has eleven and thirteen, and Grace, Grace Church, I'll try to go off.
Well, Horton, Horton used to be six and seven, is it still six and seven, or now that the golf course is open again, is that?
Yeah, no, that, that switched back.
Switched back?
Yeah, and now we're, we're combining them into nine precincts. And then that saves us, and I don't, you guys got my letter, you're like, four to April. Um, it was a few months back. Um, you know, nothing would change, and, and you know, I know we have with Mr. Forsmarke to talk about um, during upcoming, with sort of recapture. And um, the same rules would apply, under feedback. Anybody, you know, has on election day, you know, as far as campaign year, has.
Can we get back to my first question, so I'm gonna go have two answers. Do you have an, an exact number of polling locations we have?
Right now.
Right now, is it nine, eight?
We have thirteen precincts. We have Grace, and then we have, um, we shared multiple at St. Pat's.
There are writers too there, so that's four, and then everybody else is single?
Yes.
So, so we, we actually have eleven?
Eleven, but thirteen precincts.
Right, okay, so um, how many do you have?
Roughly.
Right, so my, my next question would be, how many projected locations are you looking at with your consolidation?
We will have two at Grace. So, that's a good question, I guess I should do, so two Grace, and then two at St. Pat's. And then here, and then Township, what says?
Well, that's, so that's seven.
Yes, seven, so it'll be. As well, if I have to look at that, I have to do that.
Okay.
Uh, the.
Okay, so seven to nine is what you're projecting right now?
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yeah.
No, actually, no, it'd be seven.
Seven, but when the township, when the township opens up, we're gonna be utilizing that.
So you might.
We can't use, utilize it coming up this year, because.
And that's my follow-up question.
Legally, we will have the current, the township, we project to be, at least the, the construction manager, Andrews, um, I got Aaron, um, Aaron Phillips, said that we should be in the new township hall this time next, next year, but legally, we're gonna have to stay at the township, because we don't have all the election special.
So when would the library here be needed to be a polling station?
The, the following elections.
In twenty-seven.
In twenty, if we have an election in twenty. Next year's.
Well, we have an election in twenty-six.
Yeah, but.
Twenty-six, I mean, twenty-seven, if we don't have an election, it'd be in twenty-seven.
So, August of twenty-seven, pending any other.
Depending on what's notified.
That's good, thank you.
Yeah, I wish, I could see in the future, far ahead, but because we might have, and, and I haven't heard yet, but Waterford might have a school election. We haven't been, no, I use here around weeks of that.
So what um, area would this, would the library cover, do you know?
I'd have to bring, I got the map.
So, but you're, but it would, it would include Waterford schools?
Hmm, I believe you're unveiling.
Okay.
But I can, if, if you guys wanna email me and, like, where, have any of those questions on, on everything?
So what your anticipation is that we won't be a polling station until August twenty-twenty-seven?
Yeah, twenty-seven.
Okay, or the, or the primary in twenty-two years, right?
Yeah, it would, it would be a special election year, because Victoria's gonna be next year. And the presidential will be twenty-twenty-eight.
Yeah, barring a early May type thing, it would be off the, too projected.
Correct.
Okay.
Or, you know, something, any zip of.
And can then the town, and the township anticipate being in the building by this time next year?
Yeah, I actually hope so. Um, you know, the public safety building's a little farther ahead, because of uh, we were backordered with the uh, Cluam, as, as you see the wooden column, says, you know, a little bit behind schedule, but the, uh, Aaron Phelps, that, is, that is everybody that are over there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, pretty incredible guy, um, he, he had said that, he believes that. It was about a month ago. He will be in there by then, I'd say probably December, I hope it.
So, can I just summarize? Cause I'm a little.
Yeah.
I'm a little slow. The um, we're not looking to be part of the twenty-twenty-six election.
No.
Wouldn't start until after that.
Yeah, we'll start.
Okay. When you mentioned this nine days of voting thing, but then you said we're only one day of that?
No, we, ninety-eight early voting.
Yeah.
Nine-day early voting. Here, we would just utilize this site for one day.
The election.
Yeah, the election.
Okay, that's what I missed, that's what I was.
Just, just one day.
Okay, alright, so nine days would still be at the township?
Yeah, it would be, I, that's, you know, unless now, we gotta, you know, if there was a grant or something, we could get a generator here, some, you know, you never know what happens.
Okay.
But so far, it's worked out great. And we had, we didn't, when this first started, we, we didn't have much of a turnout till the presidential, and I was shocked. And pleasantly surprised the amount of people that, um, each year, Congress, like, we'll put that.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, only two and a half away. So it kinda changed the dynamics of, uh, election day.
Mm-hmm.
We're not as busy with, you know, advancing, developing the nine-day early voting.
Okay.
So Anthony, I know you guys are in the planning stage for the report, right? I mean, okay, so have you, you've looked at the facility, obviously, you know what we have, and how you would run the line out the door, out that way, that, that way?
Yeah, I don't.
Not to interfere with our.
Yeah, I don't anticipate a line, because we, you know, last year, during the presidential, it was pretty, pretty calm. You know.
Well, early voting changed all.
So.
Would we be using these doors instead of the front doors?
Yeah, we could, I mean, I hear we could plan it through here, and.
I mean. But then there's really no.
And we would, we could plan that prior. Once you guys approve it, then we could sit down with the Library Director, and whoever's on the committee, and I'm not supposed to, you know, I get why, so, as far as. So I don't have to do it all.
I was just thinking about accessibility, and also no cover for people waiting outside. Yeah.
But, but one thing, Anne, I didn't know, that, I think this is an excellent opportunity, right? We have people in the township every day that, you know, move into our, you know, new homes or existing homes, and they don't know, do you think about the library, what's in it, facilities, yeah? And I know, I keep in the library, how beautiful it is, and the staff's incredible. And that's just non-put traffic, more awareness, and I know as you go into your next conversation, that's it, that's a great, great piece for people, you know, to utilize the library and so, so you can get to know the people. The staff and the wonderful.
So, because I don't see anybody asking this question, I'll ask it, so when's your drop dead date? Do you need to know him, Library?
Um, the drop dead, right now, I mean, I go back speak with Jillian, who's basically out of cash, with his entire responsibility to, you know, because she wanted it the year before, and I said absolutely not, because, you know, we're going into election year.
Mm-hmm.
And as we know, when I was a policeman, the road shut down all front. And I tell people, okay, you're gonna have to come through the library and do this way. People, you know, we're all creatures, they have it, they lose their mind.
Yeah.
And a lot of people do that, because you remember when we were over in Dublin, and that was torn down, and we listed it in five different locations. The internet, we put signs on the fence. And um, I received a phone call from the citizen that used words I didn't know existed. Had me, and I said, I understand it, but we did post, we did everything, but not gonna make everybody happy, we all know that, deal with the public. We just not, you know, we, we serve on these boards to represent citizens as many as we can. But careful ourselves, it's not everybody's gonna be happy. And we, we strive to do that.
So one last for me is, uh, when do you plan on having the consolidation done, obviously by the August twenty-seventh?
Oh, yeah, before that, yeah.
Before that.
You're gonna, you're gonna receive stuff, I mean, I hope you already have it, talking about that, and we're getting that going. And like I said, um, I, I'm lucky to have the staff, I picked an incredible staff. People knowledgeable, because, you know, the brand person such as Jillian's, and I can't put her out, but it's a lot. Knowledgeable, she's passionate, there's a lot of continuing education that we have with elections, and training every year, we have training coming up in December. Um, give credit hours and things like that towards our, it's been current with everything. So, before we, you know, started, I, I thought this, I said, I'm gonna make sure we're on a good election cycle, and that way it gives out this pedigree, then we'll, then we have a chance to talk to you guys about it before.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if you guys decide not to, then we'll have to find another location.
I was just gonna add, I'm so curious if you had another one.
Yeah, we, we, the problem is, the hardest for us um, most difficult is dealing with schools, I'll be honest with you.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not, I'm not gonna say one school's better than the other, but I will, at this point, Grand Valley, um, I believe in keeping the schools closed during election. And it's paramount to me, because coming from a law enforcement background, and we know what goes on, we had the church up in Grand Link that, you know, shooter went in, and so it's very, you know, Wild Lake, under the last superintendent, decided to keep it open. I was adamantly against that, because I'll take somebody to plant, execute, and harm their children. Grand Valley, Dr. Sly, Slod, is excellent to work with. Um, he said, no, we're, we're shutting school, you know, it was their election, it's for their um, law, yeah, I believe that one is for the knowledge. And um, so I think it's very, you know, so safety, plus, it's a logistical thing for us too, because you know, there, there might be, like, we had one, for instance, when I first came in, we had a wrestling team, and that wasn't communicated, and the poor wrestling team had to roll up the mat, go down the hall, and uh, then get us getting out, so just so everybody's aware, election day for all the clerks starts at five A M, and I'm the last one to get home at two thirty in the morning, and I'm back up at six, and I'm not complaining, but I feel like I'm on surveillance again, six thirty in the morning. Um, because we're responsible for getting all the equipment. And um, we hired a, a very good movie company that has been vetted in other agencies such as Westwood, Philview, utilize that, we square in, so election workers. So, when people ask us about the integrity of the elections, and I know this, kind of what you, you're most concerned about, you know, as a, as a server, retired, both of us, my definitely not. We're following as much as we can, and a nine-year-old facility that we have cameras everywhere, we're trying to keep everything as secure as possible, when we did this building, was here, we thought about every aspect of security and being able to utilize that, how many people could get in certain rooms? And just kind of like, uh, thinking of like a police department on your login evidence, you have one, uh, you know, one or two people there in charge of the evidence. That's it. That way you preserve chain of custody, and, and we treat our elections in White Lake Township, chain of custody, same way. You know, and um, and, and partner, so a lot of that has to do with logistics for us. With the school, schools are great, but I'd like to, I'd like to try and get out of them, you know, so.
Is there a contract that, um, would?
We, if you're worried about um.
I don't, I just, I don't know what the norm is, is sign contracts with the.
Yeah, I mean. If you're worried about, like, some type of uh, liability, if you wanna write something up through your attorney, feel free, I mean, but, you know, it's a concerted ball, they can slip a ball come, or save it to township, we try to through our, using our uh, maintenance agreements, and they try to keep our sidewalks, and.
So maybe Gwen, you were asking, do you do contracts with the churches?
No, not at this point, school districts, um, no, that's a, I mean, actually, like, really, it's been a long day, you know.
I'm just.
Morning ease with this building next door and you guys have been through it, God bless you for it, it's been uh. Very uh. Very cumbersome as far as dealing with the artifacts and, you know, every, there's a lot of moving mechanics, as you know, and. After speaking with some of the members on the board. You know, the poncho list at the answer important. Because some things get messed and just trying to stay happy, it's my mind swimming constantly. Election clerk stuff and then. Now the building. So it would be, I, you know, and I, I don't know if anybody has any uh. Questions, but I would. Pull up my already email, that, did everybody get this? So I just think it's a. You know, as a resident, I think it's a positive thing. So a lot of people and they had a really good assessor that we had. Cherry Peket, as you already say, from the county, he's very good with the residents, so they make sure that people know our facilities, but. What a better opportunity once we're here next door and people to be able to walk back for it and then utilize. These great publics, that's what law overdue. For the community.
My biggest concern was if, if we had.
Yeah. Portable generators.
And you'd be responsible if we didn't have any power and water. Something in.
Yeah, water. You know, we, we provide, yeah, yeah. But I'll give you the example, it's a great question. So our library. Um, there's a grinder station back there. It backs up occasionally. Which then leaves no. Facilities to go to the bathroom, now. We, at one point, one time, had to order. A quartet body, a couple quartet bodies and well, some people have health conditions, things like that, so. The last, that last time it happened, we were, you know, I told supervisor, try not to make that call. But I would have sent, I would have sent people in at that time because we were sending people over to Kohl's. You know, it was just, it was just not practical. So the good thing that I see is, and while we're probably on the same circuit, but. Because that happened here, we're pretty close, you know, for, for the library, you know, which is gonna be a good thing. Hopefully, you know, the long term goal is that. Hopefully a developer kind of wanna buy the property next door and develop that. Centralized water.
Okay.
So if you wanna email me, I took down my email, it's uh. A noble at. White Lake H W P dot com. Um, some of those questions, I'll get it to you, I mean, I. Because we've been redistricting and everything, so.
Cause I do have a question on that, so. When does everybody have to? Do the, the uh, you call it redistricting, I call it consolidation. What, do you have a deadline? I mean, from the, from the state?
Yeah, it's good, and again, it's, it's.
Prior to the census.
Yeah, it's, it's coming up, but we're, we're gonna be sending stuff out once, it's, it's. Coming up in the next few weeks. I was talking to Julian about that, we're, you're gonna get new precinct cards. And if you haven't already, I gotta. Ask her because she was waiting on one more thing today. To send out and I gotta be asked, I just slipped my mind. Uh, but, oh, I can answer all that tomorrow. Yeah, it's, it's been a. You know, our, our cards that are in here, Daniel cards, they're all going one, we're going one by one. She's gonna take forever, yeah, so we gotta. Pull those out. So the election laws and everything keep changing as we. As we speak. And uh. Good example, and Dave will probably touch base on that. Um, what is it, the thirty second district, Senate District Day? Um, that they're gonna have a. Is coming up, so. That's a really touchy situation because you're gonna have a lot of clerks that are gonna work Christmas Eve. And they're gonna work all the way through the holiday. And that let alone is gonna cost the taxpayers up there about a million and a half. Uh, uh, uh. On a small, but just guess one, right offhand. On the taxpayers for, for that special election, just like having special actions for the schools. But those are usually right around two hundred fifty thousand. If you had one of them, uh, this city set it off, I'm just pulling on a hundred thousand. So. Again, I don't get to make up those decisions, uh. Way above my uh. Figureable, whatever like that, but. Got it. And there's, if you have any questions about anything like. As we get towards, you know, getting the civic center, you know, we're. Hopefully be able to get some tourists, so you, committee also, so everybody knows and spread the word, Stanley Park is open. So you could drive, has anybody had a chance to drive down there yet? Take a drive during the day, it is absolutely gorgeous down there. And those were, you know, we use grant money on it too.
I used to, I've been walking down there all the time.
Yeah, wait till you see it now, it's, it's, like, it just seemed like a transfer overnight.
I think the, the township put out that drone picture.
Yeah, did you see that?
Yeah, it was absolutely beautiful.
Yeah, it's gorgeous. Now, I hope in summertime, because I drove down there, that uh, horse flies were really bad, so. I'm hoping that we can do something about that.
As long as you don't make the horse flies an endangered species.
Well, there is a culler for the snakes to go under, that was required. And I'm not making that up. So, um, but some of the questions, but on that, but. Yeah, basically. You know, the greatest impressive term, we have sites that. Don't have generators. So we would love, love to use the site.
The dates for being totally abrupt for the language, when our original language needs to be.
I can get that for you now.
That would be great.
I get you, any questions, April, please sign them out. And I'll get it.
And the um. And the primary is going to be in August, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And. Your next guest. You might not have, well, August twenty seven, you might not have it. There's not always, there's not always an election. With your, unless you're just a city official. Yeah, we're on a.
We're on a now.
I have now.
No elections between now and.
God, no, not this year.
Not us. It's an even number.
There'll be a primary. What, what's gonna be enough?
In twenty twenty six?
No, I meant, guys, I'm tired, I've been up since six, twenty six, next year.
Our, our mail-in is next year.
No, I was talking about next year, twenty six. So you're done talking about your topic, you're out there.
This is something we needed to ask our.
Yeah. So next year will be obvious.
Right, because we're trying to back up, make sure that we have everything ready.
Yes. And I've been working closely with April to get her that information. Came up, we've been brainstorming as we had a Zoom call. Make it a success, so. Can, the expert will be up next talking, if you don't mind, stick her on my list of it. Since you're a clerk. You, I, could they, could they legally do a made election? Even though, I mean, they're a school, but at least for all the magic. But it will cost. But they're the only thing on the ballot. Yeah, they're the only one on ballot, kind of a school. Option, I don't want. Hundreds of thousands of dollars that we don't. Ah, so sensitive. And then that's why. He's here to talk about strategy of like how we ran the police empire. Message, you know, the, the police empire, you know, how we did every story capture, so. Been going at it since six AM, so.
Thank you, Anthony.
Yeah, thank you, Victor.
Thank you.
I appreciate. Would you like to get your, uh, you make sort of like your money? And if anybody would like to work in election. Please do. I took Pete Pichinato's. Always kind of working on meetings and he has, he turned out to be an awesome touch here. And he's done a great job, so it's. It's good to see that. Thank you.
See you again. So I don't, I, you answered my question. No, you got mine, I'm good. Thank you.
Well, since we did a restoring and capture for the. There's some fire and might as well bring it out. So. How is this on the ballot, is it, it's, you're, you're not changing the military, right? It's the same military, so you're, you can technically. Basically run the same, the same, uh, well. Okay, the last one, was it also renewed? Okay, so you could run the same. Other than changing the amount, it's good, it's projected to raise, you can just use the same wording. For your, uh, for your proposal.
Well, we're looking at different wording, um. Uh, may use the same wording that we did before. Um, the township for place and fire use something slightly different. And we went with what our, uh, judiciary said, um. I liked what place, how place and fire workers a little bit better. And so we do have some examples of other, um. Townships, one of the things that, there were several things last time on the ballot, and so we were the very last item. Um, and there were, um. Several different millages that were there and, you know, it's pretty big, um. Um, there was a lot to vote on in that election. Of all the, of all the township libraries and city libraries that needed, um, their mileage renewed, we were one of, even though worst items approved. It was one of the lowest. Percentages that passed, we were in like low fifties. Most of the libraries, when I, we went across the border, most of them, their library renewal had, um, been voted yes. Um, at like more in the high fifties to the mid sixties and. You know, so like. Is it because we were on the very last thing and it was a, you know, a very large election, you know, a lot of things to vote on or, um. And do people really read? At that point, when you, when you have, I think we were the fourth millage. Do people really read all of those?
Well, that wouldn't change your percentage, I mean, because people gotta read all the way there for now also.
Right, but do they, did they really read through it, you know, yeah, so I think we only, we only passed it by fifty two percent, which. We wanted to go back to that.
Well, I was thinking if you do have the same thing. We can, part of our, one of our talking points can be is you're voting on the same thing you already passed. I mean, as far as banking and a renewal. Uh, the argument for, for people saying that, you know, the capture is a tax increase. It's the same exact renewal, we'll show, if we show the same, the old one was this rate, but the new one's this rate. That's what people. And then you can call it a renewal because that's what you're doing. And that's what we give the police and fire, now that, but this is a say yes committee, not, uh. This was not put out by the township. So there's two, there's two kinds of, I don't have anything for White Lake where we did it, the public funds. Uh, because there's information now and so that. Right. And those are, there, I can show you examples of those where. I mean, we did a pretty good sale draft, we just didn't say, well, yes. Uh, but here, we said there's not a tax rate increase, it's not, it's the same exactly. Um, and heck, how is the valley so far? So the same, the same tax rate is more money. Something must be there, but it's not a tax rate, it's, it's, it is, you can call it a renewal. Without being shown. And we need to get a program. Um, and last time it was also. Those are, but last time we're, you still have a lot of controversy about the granting, I still. I mean, most.
Vocal, I mean. I mean, there, there's people still complaining about it.
So that, you know, that might have, there were two or three percent. On your, on your thing. Your annual margin, so.
Well, we won with two votes before us. We built this, we built the building based on two votes.
What did you?
Three in the recount, yeah.
What did you do to promote those?
Not whole. Yeah, that kind of.
So I'm here because the margin got it comfortably close.
Yeah.
Okay. Um.
And, and, you know, obviously, I mean. Our managers are really important.
Sure, absolutely.
So we have a fixed, we have three, we have three millages and one's fixed. And, um, the other two, you know. They're eight years, are they eight year? Mm-hmm, so we did one just two years ago. Right, and so, and so now the other one is up, you know, another eight years.
That's one thing I hate about him. And I realized just to hedge, hedge your bets, you gotta. Best not to have all your eggs on one basket. Um, downside of it is that people. Saying every two years, you're one year.
Right, and people don't understand that.
Right.
For sure.
Uh, but we'll deal with it. So you approximately five thousand people are in the primary. I was right, yes.
One hundred twenty two. So even though in the actual wording, it says that. And restore. Which technically isn't a tax increase.
It's not tax rated.
Right, it's right.
It is a technically breached, it's not a tax rate increase. It's, it's a, it's a. It's bringing it back to what you, what was originally bogus for, um. And, and. The amount that you were capturing as far as. For, for an actual taxpayer isn't much. You know, it's, it's just the, that natural downward pressure that happens between each time you come here. Um, and it has nothing to do with, you're not asking for a higher inventory. So this is how we did it from now. Um, and you guys are gonna have a, some kind of a say yes committee that you're raising. So like the brand, well, it's not the friends, but it'll be something like. Um. So that was what we did. And this is, this is the most economic size. This, it's like a two thirds of a sheet of paper. And, uh. I'm not gonna recognize this style. We did big ones. But, uh. It's something. Spend time looking for, but if you use the, the two, this size. We could see. You know, it's two thirds of a sheet of paper. So it's, that's the biggest size you can have at the lowest. That posting trade. Although the larger advantage much more money to speak for. You walk into a printer and you say, what's the most economical thing, they tell you that two thirds. The big ones are about a nickel a house and one of the ways all. And then five thousand homes is a couple hundred, but.
So we have about five thousand homes that, that vote in the primary.
Yeah, both primaries, yes.
Okay.
So we mailed. Actually, I looked it up, we mailed five thousand one hundred and seventy seven.
Okay.
Uh, which is probably. Posted increase. It's, and most of your tape is pretty much that size. For, for, so. You guys were talking about F C ballots and early ballots and all kinds of stuff. What we do. And what I've been doing, it's far more economical and way less labor intensive. Is we mail every, if you can afford to mail one once, we mail everybody. Right around when the absentee ballots come up. So, but that's six weeks before the election. So you don't wanna be six weeks out, somebody votes on election day and forgot. So we mail. What we'll do is something closer to election day, depending on how many we're doing. I got some big campaign, they're running weekly mailings and, but every week, every time I do another mailing, I go and eliminate the people. Who've already voted. So you don't pay to, you don't pay to, uh, so it's kind of reversed with the old. The old school of chasing the absentee ballots is, where are we chasing, very milling? So, it's nothing to chase. Um, and then if we, if we mail again. Say closer to the election, we might eliminate half. Um, and we have, you know, it won't be half as expensive, it'll probably be two thirds as expensive because we want, you know, kind of a scale. But, um. So a lot of this just depends on. On what you raise. Um, if you are only going to ma, if you only have enough to mail once. I'm gonna take my best guess, if he's going to M S T. And mail to them early so that you got them and then we'll mail everybody else later. And.
Okay.
Even though it, and we'll do it sort of like one mailing as far as. It would probably cost another hundred bucks to deliver. Start with a post office on the truck, I said, it's my. So I think. You know, if it's a. When it's not, when it's not a taxing, when it's not an increase. I sort of feel like, um. Getting into how much it costs people. Is, is unnecessary, like, if I'm doing a, a rate increase, I'll say. For the, you know, we'll pick a median homeowner, um. You know, home size and we'll say to the average home in White Lake, it'll cost you a dollar or whatever it is for the, for the increase. Dollar or less more. But in this case. I think we just say, we've just been doing your library, I mean, say some nice things about the library. Whatever you wanna highlight. I did this museum and saying, uh. I made them look way more cool, and it was, it was a taxpayer paid one. And so couldn't say, say yes, but I made them look a whole lot less boring than they are. Talked about all the Indian artifacts that have to be stored there, nobody can see them for now, but we got it. Showed a little spin. But, I mean, this is, you know, regardless, here you can be. As salesmanship as you want.
Right, because this is.
Because this is a committee and it's a political issue and you. As long as you're not dishonest, you're fine. Uh, we can put whatever, whatever, whatever face on it you want. I, I, I do better with questions than answers. Than giving speeches, it's kind of a simple thing.
Sure.
Um, but I think the core of it would be doing something like this, especially. In, in a primary, in a primary, you're gonna have a higher incidence of absentee voters than you can handle. So you, you definitely wanna put something in your hands.
Okay. So, does the wording on the ballot matter as much? Or is it just more how we present ourselves in this manner?
Yeah, you know what, since it's not a tax, if it's a taxpayer paid one, I always. Smother people with details because. Transparency is, is the big thing, obviously appearance of transparency. Um. And so I would put, and if I, and if it was a bigger piece, I would, I would put the, the language on here and if we're really. Want to make the case that same, that's what. And if we're really wanting to make the case that same, that's what I was wondering if. You know, we could put them both on here. You're gonna, we'll also judge this by your pushback. Like we put out this. And then we start hearing the. We started looking at white lake cabins and all that kind of stuff and seeing what, what people are saying. We, we might want to. I don't like to directly respond with those people. But we, we can cut their, we can kind of passively aggressively cut their feet out from under. By. Responding to that without sending like a response, just making that one of our points in the next one.
Hmm.
It's one of the good things about it. If you can raise enough to have multiples, as we can account for that, we. Which is kind of what. That's, that's what makes the job fun. Just put something out is, is nice, but when you're, you know. Going back, a little bit of back and forth or, or keeping track and having a little strategy to what's going on is, is what makes, that's what I enjoy. But, um. Anyway.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions?
So, um. Because we will probably put something in our, in our mailer, you know, they want them, the mailer that we put out every quarter. Um, talking about what's going on in the library. And obviously we can't ask for people to vote yes, but we can tell them, you know, all the benefits of the library, right?
Yeah.
Um, and is that something that you, putting that verbiage together, is that something you can help us with?
Oh, I absolutely like to see it.
Okay.
I absolutely, when it's anything you guys are gonna do. That the public will see about this. I mean, I, I know I don't have control over it, but I, I'd like, I'd like to see it and I, and you do a base back on it.
Okay.
Um, and that might be the place to put.
And that's what we're looking for if we want, we, we know, I mean, this, this kind of information is great in, in for our, um. For the committee that.
Right.
You know, the state of our committee, right? But what we can do as the, um, as the library itself. Is somewhat limited, but we, obviously we, we want to put our best foot forward and a lot of. Our concern about this new, um, election is that, um. We are a separate entity from the township, and even though we love what's going on at the next door. There's a lot of people in the community that don't love what's going on next door.
Absolutely.
And so, um, we need to really. Clarify that we, um, are our own financial, financial entity.
So I. I helped the, the, I did saying on children's or something. And I think. Of course, you know, it was nice to wine. Um. But this was paid, this was still a friend's thing. Kind of thing. So they, they could do, and this was a bigger piece. But they could, so they, uh. They can say renew, zoo or vote yes. It's cool for the rights, but, uh. Um, we did. You know, we did the, 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 the thing on there, even though it was, it was a say yes many. They also did the. But, but around the zoo, we had posters on. That, that there was a millage. Uh, on this date. Um. My defensive communication, I haven't given it to the ballot. Uh. Yeah. Well, we did lots of communication around this news, like data was happening, what percentage of your, of the budget came from that? Uh, obviously we published the, the language and the thing made it clear. I think in the newsletter we did show. That some, at least an excerpt from the old one and then the new one. To say this is the. You can see it's the same, you know, across the.
Okay.
That was not the heaviest with there. But they did. There were. There've been a lot of millages and a couple of ones that. They were getting a little narrow. It was the same thing. They were getting a little narrower and they said, let's blow this off. It went from. I think these are sixty percent to eighty percent.
So I have a question for you. Let's back up a little bit. So you foresee that the, the upcoming primary. Would be typical of primaries and what like. Done.
Yeah, it's recent. It's funny. No matter what they do, nothing ever changes much. So all of this, this, uh. It's like the permanent absentee list. Um, and so people who've signed up to get ballots all the time. If they don't, if they didn't vote August four, they're probably not going to vote August. And I, I just did, uh. So I just did a, a city council race and, uh, running the senators, my client, all the runners. And, uh. Four years ago, we can have a permanent absentee list. And we had. Now we had more people on the ass, permanent absentee list than voted. In this last election. Um, now, I, I couldn't judge it by the last election, because the last election was a table sweaty fight where this mobbed up. Former mayor who'd been running the town was coming back and trying to run again. So there was some excitement around that one, but. Um, but there were literally more people on the permanent absentee list than voted in the election. So. It didn't. There was obviously far fewer people voting than the last election, but that has moved the election. So. But there are five thousand, five thousand homes, about seventy-five hundred people. Who vote in primaries on a semi regular basis. And that's, I look down as far as people who vote like a quarter of the time. And in primaries.
Okay.
Um, so. You know, if you get, if it was most of them, you're good. I think a smattering of the ten percent or so, and that one, they change the election a lot. We've been targeting, targeting is everything and stuff in this, because. And how many registered voters are in?
Eight thousand.
How, how many?
Twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah, so. Even in a general election. We, we would probably only target about twenty thousand because being registered doesn't mean you vote either.
For sure.
So, and, and even in, even in November. So even for president. You know, what seventy-five is big for, for president. So, um. Yeah, everything's about targeting and finding it and just going away with people with it, with it. Was the mission.
Okay.
And yeah, I'll help anything I can. I know where, I know where all the legal, all the legal lines are. Some school boards have some, some really, really. Cautious attorneys. They're out there to help you get your job done. They're very huge for the city. And so, you know, it's like those guys that, the, the three, three foot tall monkey, they have monkey bars because they, they don't want to get sued because they look hot. And, uh. I always, I was one of those very tired of that because. I know everyone's.
Okay.
And you're a king when villages are lost and it's, in part, since monkey is a design, which. What do you think was the biggest of the times? Usually, um, there's already been some, so if it's a renewal. On a essential search. Now, I've had a couple. Say, uh, where we created a new village because they, they didn't have anything for their C D. In their high schools. So, you know, there was only counting missions. So we created one. That was a, a different thing. Um. A lot of it is just present is people knowing what you're doing, what you're asking for. And the more they feel like you're over the top of that, that's, that's like the first battle. But it's usually if there's been some kind of a past flight where they felt. Um. Put upon or betrayed or lied to or whatever. Or, or it's just a big increase, you know? Seven township schools asked for a quarter billion dollars. About a year ago. You know, maybe I'm about five to one. Maybe. Well, there wasn't anything I could have done to help this.
But I'm a renewal, so you're not.
So we did a renewal on, on, yeah, libraries, zoom, cops. Those are the kinds of things that people expect their community to have, whether they wanted to build a new building or not. They got one now. Um, generally, if you just communicate with them. And communicate with people who are going to vote for you. As long as it's nice and strong, I'm sure you. Close it. And, you know, pick out. You know what your most well attended things are.
Mm hmm.
Well, I love, you know, a little picture of those.
Okay.
Just get. Just get, uh. Oh, that's my, that's my grandson out there. Um. Just make sure you have. You get, uh, signed releases up here, using his pictures. My daughter was okay with it.
You know, maybe. Okay. Thank you very much for the info. Oh, I had one question. Would you help us in identifying who should be getting the mailers?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, that's, uh. I, I buy that data.
Uh huh.
Um, uh, because there's. There's, there's this guy, Lance, who just has this great algorithm. It's like match dot com. And, uh, he, he uses people's all time voter score. So like somebody moves here from another. From another, you know, from somewhere else. Their voter score comes with them. So if I just went to him for data and said, who voted? You know. Uh, one of the last four primaries, I would miss all the movie.
Brilliant.
So he's, he's very good at predicting this as well. Well, I've, I've been using for thirty years.
Okay, okay.
It's great. And then, like you said. Cuts us down from mailing from thousands.
Mm hmm. Mm hmm. Okay. So for a primary like, if, if, you know, we're, we're going to do the millage in primaries. Um, so between what, I know that there's things that the, um, the board in the library itself, we can, you know, use you as a consultant.
Yeah.
And then you have the yes campaign. Between those two. For, um, a renewal such as this. Can you give us an estimate on what your consultant?
Oh, yeah, I don't, I don't charge them anything. I just. I'll consult them both for, um. This, this is not going to be, you know, I'm not going to be on the phone with you. Every day and like a state representative or something. So I, I, I. I like money, but I love money.
Correct.
I'll hear you solid.
Okay.
Then we'll. We're hearing all.
Appreciate your time. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to get in bottom of these right second.
All right. So getting back to the agenda. When you were giving your treasury report. Are you ready for that?
I am ready for my treasury report.
Okay. And if people can look at our balance fund. Mm hmm. Do you have, um. And if you have any. Anything to say about it? Otherwise, you know, the finance committee will do it and things that's. It was April and the stats center's very, very good job this year, um, keeping us under budget and, um, you know, been. Almost in every category, we're going to be, um, at the end of the year, will be, um. You know. It's been conservative, um, use of, of, of the finances for sure. So. Um, next month, we'll show a little bit. Well, in, in December. April, it'll really show us, you know, what we spent throughout the year.
Right, and we set the budget and then next month.
Okay. All right, um, and then I, we do have a, uh, before I get ahead of myself. I want to make a motion to accept this, um, the October bills as presented for payment. Second, okay, all in favor?
I.
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 That was enough.
Okay, thank you.
We really got to get away from that. More yes votes or no? That was on the first page, but this one we don't, we five years for.
It's, it's.
You said she said four?
Yes, Janet said four, but it's, it's actually five. Um, and then I have one other thing that I would like to, um, vote on, some. I'll wait for our president to come down. So, um, while we're waiting, we have a C D at Chase that was, is supposed to renew this month. And, um, Chase had a little bit of a error in how they documented our C D. That we had last year. And so they're fixing that problem and, and totally fixed that problem that C D is not being moved yet. Okay.
So it's.
So it was, it was, yeah, it was supposed, which is like. I don't remember what, it, it's like, um, four point something. It was three, three point nine nine. Yes, so. Better than what we're going to be going for in the future, um, but it was supposed to expire on the twelfth. And they documented it incorrectly and they thought it was going to go longer and we went back and showed them the correct documentation and so they're. And, you know, we would, I sent them the documentation to renew the C D and they're like, it's not renewable yet. And I'm like. Well, yes, it is. And then I showed them the, um, certificate that they gave us and they said, we'll be back. So we're waiting for them to come back and I reached out to them again today and. They still aren't back. So anyway, so yes, yeah, um, as far as I know, it's, it's still chugging along at the three point nine nine percent. And then, um, as soon as that gets rectified, we'll, that's the be. So the other C D that we have coming up in January that, um. We have a C D that's coming up next week that you're going to take care of, right? Um, and then we have a C D in January that, um. Is with Lake, um, Michigan Credit Union.
Mm hmm.
And it's, um, currently the one that's going to expire is at three point nine. I don't, um. Think that that is, um. I don't know what they're going to do right now. They have an absolutely great rate, um, that their C D rate right now, I think it was. For eleven months is four point three percent. Uh, come January, it's probably not going to be that high. But, um, they, because we have more than a hundred thousand in, um. In Lake Michigan, they consider us a V I P and they, they, they have special C D rates for V I P now. Patrons, so. So I am going to make a motion. That we roll over the entire amount of the, of the Lake Michigan Credit Union C D returning on January eighteenth. It's going to be approximately two hundred and seven thousand dollars. Um, I'm going to, um, make the motion. Who rolled it over up to eleven months, depending on the interest rate. Um. So it's up to eleven months. My point is, is if it's. The interest rate is seven months is the best deal, we'll do seven if it's. If it's, um, up to eleven, we'll do the eleven, uh, because we want that interest to be, uh, recorded for twenty twenty-six.
Well, second, I'm off.
All in favor?
I.
For yes vote.
Treasures.
Okay, thank you. It's, so. That's it for the reports of April, the true director's report.
Okay, uh, we will. So, um, I didn't get to add it to this director's report, but I do want to call attention to the blessing box. Um, that.
I can't miss it. It's very pink.
Looks great.
Yeah, yeah. The young ladies, um. Install and, uh, they're just, we're just waiting to get the, um. Their website up. So there is some preliminary verbiage. Cool to do. Been waiting for them to give me a little bit more. So I'd like to, you know, get them some cred by me, but, um, that's going to take a little longer. With our high school service. Um, but we're very excited and, um, I, I think they did a nice job and, uh, of course. So, uh, we did place our first. First leaf on the donation tree. I wrote it, we placed two more and so we are steadily, uh, getting our first badge put on there. Uh, so we're excited about that.
Are you taking pictures?
Yes.
I know people are coming in.
We are taking pictures as the leaf is being placed. We are taking pictures after. We've taken pictures as the people standing in front of it.
Are we gonna like?
Look at it put together, um. Some sort of video, uh, leaving there to the, like the e-newsletters.
We're not agreeing with the petition, we're excited.
Perfect. Very excited about that. Yeah, the first week was a memorial and so it was rather, uh, fresh. For the family and so that was, uh, emotional, but. We decided to, um, you know, support the library.
Okay.
And then we had our first annual, not our first, my gosh, we had our annual fire list. Appreciate the bill with the, uh, way, way from the tire department and getting things to sit down personally that, or it's every single year. And they threw their leaf while they were here. And so we put, uh, got some pictures of that. That's very, um, great group, great group of people. Um, cert services, a lot of professional development going on there in that department. Our October social media stats, uh, up from September, looking good there. Our users for our app are, that's looking good as well. Our users for our app are, that's looking good as well. Uh, we had a really fun comment, so I, I, before I state the comment, I'm gonna give you a little bit of background on it. I tried to kind of explain it, but so we had a mom who was. Baby and toddler story time program. And this was, so the librarian was. Kind of talking about upcoming events and her mom pulled out her phone and said, the app is great. Uh, because here the babies are playing and they're doing the story time and she hears about what's coming up. And she can just pop on the app and sign up right now, so she goes. So I just thought it was a great story. She's like, I love it. And so that's fantastic. That's exactly what it's called. It's in the. Being able to pop on there and just.
I would just wanna say that my husband brought my bag in today for me. And when he saw the announcement that said that we had a new app, he was like, oh, I'll have to download that. So I just, you know, other people are looking for that stuff and, and it's good.
Yeah, so uh, lots of great uh, director connections this month. Meeting, supposed to cause a few. Friends, uh, they are gonna begin issuing membership cards for new and in new memberships for the coming. Uh, their dues are now being from the calendar year, they know they need that change. They're payable on January first, individual ten, and their teams. They're gonna get a little cars.
Can I ask a quick question? Can you be on the friends? And be on the board? But can you, can you hold an office? I thought so. But you can't hold an office. Okay, I saw that. I just saw that Karen was their secretary this year, and so that's what made me think of.
Right, you cannot.
Okay.
Um, so uh, again, my like teachers have donated a hundred and twenty five items to the animal shelter, um, which is a very generous. And the Jane Richelson Agency is back donating twenty advanced reader copies uh, to us. Very thankful for that.
What, what are advanced reader copies?
They're called, um, so it's not quite the published.
Thank you.
And those are what you use as like people.
And it's, that's what I thought.
Good professional development for our library. Well, we're sending a full state conference, uh, Emily was uh, on the work group to plan that. She's also on next year's work group to plan the annual. So again, as I remind you, will take place in July, so uh, if you have an interest.
Do we have a date on that?
Yeah, well, I don't, I can.
Okay, because we really should, as many of us. That can't attend should.
See, that looks good for you. We'll be showing all that. Youth and teen services, um. So they did, are doing a Dino November uh, scavenger hunt, so within the first week of the month, they got. Uh, over a hundred participants, so that went through this very, they love doing those scavengers. Super, super fun. The kids love it too. Uh, our landscaping group, which is my two main groups. Even though I sent over a dozen people on my list. Uh, my main piece, uh, we did a walkthrough just to kind of look at things and see. Um, how it went this year and what we're thinking out for, for next year and these, and what you're gonna attempt to do for that.
Are we ready for the snow? Like, are there? Shrubs that we had to wrap or anything?
Do you have a wrap that has not been suggested so far? Um, every, it seems that you seem to be giving without wrapping, which is nice. The, what is nice for our landscaping group is to have the purchase. Storage container for the hardware set. Uh, we were able to take the old. One and repurpose that and that in the spring will go out in the um, the garbage in. Uh, and so that all of their tools and their, their fertilizer and their things that they need can be kept dry and. Access to, so that's a real fun, make sure you're excited about that. Uh, so yeah, kudos. So great anniversaries and some of us nineteen years. Love him.
Fabulous.
And Heather, six years, um. Right hand, left hand, just that, her and Amy, we are just keys in the pot now, so big thank you to her. Uh, and our technology, um, uh, see, what I have under here is what T O N consultants are doing for us. So I'm trying to keep you updated on up there. With us, so. Well, I see.
I see that under adult services, um. You'd mentioned this to me and I was in here the other day too about this. A past, the role of streaming sticks.
Yeah, so I'm doing a little bit of investigation into that to see um, what the values are. So it looks like a complicated issue if you're putting a streaming, a streaming service on there and what that means. So uh, I, I did get some information from Library of Michigan. I just wanna analyze it a little bit more and protect, potentially send it to our attorney. Uh, even though our attorney was actually.
So this is something just like the um.
Fire stick.
Yeah, it's, and I, it's. But just like. The wifi, then you could just. Right, check it out, just like our wifi. And use it and so if somebody's traveling, they could take one of our wifi's, they could take a streaming stick, you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so we think of the Chelsea, she could gather a huge spreadsheet of libraries that. Do it, have it, currently doing it. Some that, uh, you know, only put something like, that is library, like Kennedy. So which we're, we're gonna be getting.
Okay.
Or. Other, other items that are library related, so I just, I just don't be very careful with that.
For sure.
It wasn't really with the response, I've come and been working back.
Okay. Okay, and then the um. The ancestors. Is that gonna be effective January?
We're working on finalizing detail and um, we're looking at a year.
Contract?
At a good rate. I'm waiting for that before.
Okay. And then the other one.
Or it might be before January.
And so that's in, in library use only.
In library.
Um, and then my last one is about Wall Street Journal digital.
Yeah, so. I did the same thing I said to you, resent a stat, so getting all the comments and just.
It's true.
I wanna look at, yeah, it's just not, it's just very database oriented. It's not. Uh, website oriented. So you really have to kind of look and click and hear and that. It's, I just don't like the user.
I asked April to look into that, that's some of the things that we could do. Cause we have the Wall Street Journal here, pick uh, and paper copy, um, and there's other libraries in the area that are, that are offering it as a digital option. Um, and I thought it would be, it would, it would be nice to have here. It's not a need, but it's a nice to have.
And I'm not done with me yet, so I'm gonna do that, I'm gonna look at the other one. Still with that.
Okay.
Look at. Kind of compare cost and use.
Okay, thank you. Great, thank you. These are all really good things that were, that were into the libraries.
For sure.
Did, and I, what, did your kids do the Dino scavenger hunt?
Yeah, they loved it.
Yeah, cause I, my um, four-year-old grandson is, goes to the Rochester Hills Library and he told me all about it. They did. You know, the same thing and I heard about it all day. And so I'm glad to see we're doing the same thing. Okay, thank you.
Um, stats, any questions about stats? Circulation. While not highest from twenty five, certainly not lowest, are the highest October. So that's good.
Great.
New card, uh, second place October. Door count, um, highest October. Computer looking good, wifi looks good. Overdrive's highest October. Uh, drop increase law. Uh, highest October, but lowest all year. And of course, drive up is gonna start from.
Do you stop call head for the drive-through?
No, you can show.
Okay. Hit the, hit the buzzer.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Where does it buzz?
The buzz is through uh, an area from the back circle. And then the person goes and does it.
So someone's listening for it, it's signed to somebody.
Yeah.
Okay. So then when's the next um, publication going out?
So John and I are working on that right now and finalizing. I gave her a, basically like the third copy. And I made changes um, to what her and I met.
Couple of weeks ago.
Weeks ago. Made a lot of her changes to that and gave her the next copy, so hopefully by next week. We can start to finalize and get it sent to the printer, um. And we've been talking about adding pages uh, potentially in the. We're thinking more or less like the summer one. Yeah, so I've just been working with the printer on what that looks like, what costs are, um. If we kept it at the same size and added. It would bump it up to, I'd have to get another quote from another printer.
Okay.
Um. Uh, if we keep it close, if we add pages but take it down by in, bottom in, so it'd be seven by eleven instead of eight. It would be close to the same amount, but you'd be losing. And can she, it was.
But I, and I guess why I'm asking too is because I know, I just felt like the last couple. But so many of the programs that are listed in there, it just makes it really look busy.
Yeah, and that's.
It's one of the things we talked about.
Focused on, um, so we were able to turn it down on the agro space this time.
Okay.
So. Thank you. That's great.
Uh, committee reports, I'll just say the building committee uh, has no report. We're kind of waiting on blue water for the sign upfront and. Um, there wasn't anything else to report on. We're working with finance committee to get a starting point to create a. More detailed list of every area in the building and what the expected life is for those areas. And when should we put the money aside and uh, that kind of stuff. So we're just waiting to hear from finance. I know you guys are busy with stuff, so.
We, we, we talked about.
A little bit too.
Yes.
Great.
We did. Yeah, we absolutely did.
So finance committee's next, are you gonna take that Becky?
Yeah. Um, we went over the twenty twenty five budget update, um, showing that we're on target with our budget. And as April mentioned, amendment was brought to the December library board meeting. Uh, we reviewed this CD that was coming up due in January. Um, we did discuss the. Or we did not, did we discuss capitalization policy? We sent it to the attorney for review, um. We discussed the capital improvement plan that the building committee is working on. Uh, regarding cost and useful life. Um, we did create a mileage folder in the board trustees folder for quick access to the language. Information that April had provided. Our next meeting is Wednesday, December tenth.
Okay, thank you. Then policy committee.
So the policy committee met Tuesday and on the fourth. Uh, the things that we're waiting on from the attorney back, we sent them. The documents, including the weapons section of the patron behavior policy, including the suggestions that William had provided. Uh, we revised the draft of it and sent it off to the attorney for their review, along with the supporting materials that we provided. Uh, so we can get some feedback on the legality and the. Policy, the epipolicy that we submitted. Uh. We also, we can do a second draft, as that mentioned by Becky, of the capitalization policy, uh, forwarded that to the attorney for review. And uh, we not yet get to the naming rights policy or the list of potential library policies to discuss. But we did go through the unattended children's policy and we had that in its packets.
So is this five G, is this current and then five E will be new? Is that? How to read it?
I, I believe five G is the existing.
Okay.
Right, that's the.
Okay.
So it's, it's substantially larger. Uh, a couple of the things that we did there was added a section on a definition of vulnerable adult. We reviewed some of the other libraries in Michigan that were using terms for adults in need, care or monitoring.
Okay.
Vulnerable adult seems to be the accepted term. So we have a section on that. And uh, you see that a lot of other information there is about uh, compliance with library policies for unattended children. And procedures. That appear to follow for unattended children altering operating hours and at closing. Including children that might get stranded. Hopefully does not happen.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, it does not happen.
Does this cover events also or programming hours that might be outside? Like when we have a patio event in the summer? Or everybody's here for ri- summer reading and there, we've got the planning wall and whatnot.
It, it to cover all of them. Discuss programs.
Okay.
Parents.
Okay. Yeah, it should cover everything that we have.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Well, and as you can see, this was, this was our previous.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, unattended children. Don't do it. Don't do it.
I'll be giving a cup of coffee to puppy.
Yeah.
So uh. We will need to. Vote on this, uh, so I would like to make a motion that we accept section five E, the unattended children policy to be added to our policy manual. As included in your court packets.
Second.
A question.
Yes.
Depending how we're gonna operate here, cause I don't wanna be missed, but so. What I'm looking at here, this whole thing is five E or what is actually five E?
Yeah, but the, the.
Every day.
It's, it's uh, one, two, three. Three and three-quarter pages.
Okay, so, um.
This list is new.
Are you aware that in the Michigan Senate, that they are proposing updating what a vulnerable adult is?
Um, yeah, I, what we did is we used.
It's current.
We used current that came from our um, from our lawyer. We can't. We can't foresee what the, what they're going to do if there's a, if there's a change in what vulnerable adult, um. If, if there's a change, we're gonna have to change our policy, but we say a vulnerable child is defined as an individual age eighteen or older. So this comes directly from our attorneys. If it, if there's something that changes, we'll have to change the policy. But we, we can't, we can't foresee what they're gonna, what they're gonna vote on in the future.
Well, I, I was just gonna, maybe I'll inform you. That if it was to pass, obviously, it, it can pass in the Senate, but it will not pass in the House unless something changes, you know, in, uh, next year. But one thing they're doing is, is they're gonna claim that if you are sixty years of age or older, you will now be a vulnerable adult. No problem. If it passes.
Okay.
Because they're opening up doors for other things. So it's, anyway, you just need to know that, cause it's kind of like crazy, because I, I find it very insulting. That I'm sixty-two and uh, I don't think that there's anything vulnerable about me.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
But wow. Okay, the way this is written by our attorney too, it, it, this is for someone that's required to, that's, you know.
It has those, those required, those, those.
Definitely, right? So I don't think that vulnerability is going to change, but we don't know, um.
No, in, in my opinion too, if they've defined it as such and they call it a vulnerable adult, if, you know, in terms of, of, of sheginal legality. We may have to change the terminology. To, to, so that they don't overlap and appear to be at odds with one another.
And, 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 you know. One of the exercises we're going through here is because. Most of the policies for the library hadn't. Besides, you know, very rarely, since I've been on the board, we weren't addressing them. They were just, the policies were made. You know, um, probably maybe we've just changed two or three policies over a year's time. Um, we're going through the entire policy manual and looking at what, what we were missing and what legally um, our policies should look like. Obviously, this, this one was not.
Oh, that's on.
So, yeah, I, I, I mean, I didn't, I, sometimes it's overwhelming, why? Cause I think we're never gonna catch up. We're gonna always be.
Well, you're.
Updating.
Yeah, I think, I think, I mean, I, I can't speak for the rest of the committee, but I said, our goal is to be better than we were last time.
Yeah. Well, I don't think there's ever been a committee that actually did all the policy. The policies were written and policies were needed.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to bring that sure.
Sure. So. You're not the only one that's gonna be vulnerable.
Well, I mean, you know.
I can, you feel vul- vulnerable? I don't feel vulnerable.
Well, anyway. So we have a motion on the floor of this, Madam President.
I'm sorry.
We have a motion.
Yes, we have a motion, we need a second. Okay, thank you, Carrie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I just have it for yes votes.
But oh, I've been writing for all night.
Um and I we were hoping at at the next meeting. The lawyers will will come back to the policy committee. And what your questions.
Well, there's just a.
If she apologized for not coming back with me, who said yesterday that she would have it to me by today and it's not, so. I'm I'm sure it's coming.
Not 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 to the labor of the discovery, so we don't really need to discuss it at this point, right, but fact is is that. We're, you know, a public entity. And so we aren't allowed to supersede state law. And that's the issue.
Well, absolutely, and as you know. Ninety nine percent of what we're doing for policy, we take well, everything we take that we bring here, the lawyer has has betted. Or the lawyer has given us that verbiage and what you're questioning, I don't I. We all in policy committee agree that it need to go back to the lawyer, but that. Very specific verbiage came directly from our lawyer.
No, I understand that, which surprised me. Our our suggestion too for them to review was to view it instead of basically, and I don't remember the exact verbiage, but the way that it was written. It seemed in reverse of what it ought to be, it ought to be in that i- instead of it being. You're not allowed to do this unless legally authorized to do some sort of thing, be the other way around, that we follow the rules that are le- legal. Uh uh with the exceptions of these things, so you're not you're not following the exception following the rule. So I think we we'll have to see if they come back with.
Well, I appreciate you guys to that in my absence, so you apologize for not being here that day, but.
If you've got a point, we're gonna take it back to that journey.
So going back to old business. We've got a bullet here for village discussion, do we want to talk about Dave? Is there any F dates on where we are with village now? We have Dave's presentation from earlier tonight.
I thought what Dave had to say, I I. I think is um good.
Yeah, he looked like he'd be fun to work with. You know, he's he's wanting to, you know, he wants to move forward, so.
I think it's important to get our best foot forward to the um to the citizens of the township, I think a lot of citizens in the township. Don't really know everything that the library has to offer and what our value is. And you know, with everything else that people are looking at and people are saying they can't afford anymore, I want them to think that the libraries. Yeah, but there's a lot of reasons, you know, that the library is good for them, but um. You know, like one of the things too that is younger people move into our community, the library is one of the things that they look at, you know, is this something that. Um they're they're looking at the these foundational things like, you know, how good's the fire, how good's the 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 place, how good's the library, right? Um you know, to live in that community, they want people, they want to showcase. And I think that's a really good opportunity and with some a consultant that has, you know, he seems pretty dynamic and when he can come up with. Um because honestly, I think we could do a lot better on our own marketing um. And so I think we have, you know, miles to go to improve on, I think that using him would be great. For for the, you know, what the board can um, you know, approve and what the yes committee.
So is this something we want to vote on or? Yeah, he gave a very broad two two thousand dollar budget, which is under our five thousand dollar threshold. It doesn't actually have.
I don't actually know the legality of it and what we needed to.
I personally don't think that you should vote on anything. To do with the consultant, maybe discuss the consultant and what he can provide for.
With the yes committee, I'm guessing, or.
There's things that we can. Yes, right.
You you right, yes, you can pay him to help you with your verbiage.
For the village and for um what we want to present to the public, as he said, like for posters. And flyers and what would be in our um. Yes. That's factual, that would be in our um. Our quarterly. Um paper that goes out. Right, because we're gonna want, we're we're gonna want to put it out in our paper, our um our flyer and. I'm using the wrong terminology, in the spring and in the summer, our newsletter, right?
So we don't have a contract, Sky, right? Was he paid tonight?
No, he was not, he's just, he's, yes, and he and he gave us a lot of information, but a lot of what he's talking about too. We realized that, you know, we don't have that expertise and he does. And that's why we're looking at a consultant and the yes campaign can use the consultant as well. And that in um fire and police used his services. For the last village and their percentages that they um were approved by were a lot higher than ours.
So I'll just, as a blanket statement, he comes because of noble.
That's right, that's who recommended that.
Yes.
Right.
He had been recommended to us before and we didn't take up a few bluff on it.
From, okay, from somebody else?
I don't, it it came.
He's out of Grandland or he's out of. Oklahoma, I mean, he's up.
Other people have used him and. Okay, so in the twenty twenty two, people were saying, do you want to use a consultant and I think we just chose not to.
In the twenty twenty two for that village?
For that million.
And it passed?
It passed. It was like fifty two percent.
And when was the vote?
No, twenty twenty two, I thought was like sixty percent.
Was it? I didn't think it was that high. We were one of the very lowest in all of the libraries across across a tri count.
No, that would just be twenty twenty four, the one that just happened. Okay, I'm sorry.
Whatever the last one was.
Yeah, I thought twenty twenty two was. That was the last one, oh, my mistake, there was one in the middle.
So, um, yeah, it. When we, when I looked across the board and looked at all the other townships and cities that had a library village, we were. Much lower approval.
It used to not be that way, I was thinking of the one prior to that.
And the and then we looked at the township, the fire and police, there's were much higher than ours was. So I just think that we have a message to put out, a positive message that we're that we're missing.
So and this is just how I see how things line up. From citizens in the township and that is is that. It's not about paying for a library, paying to su- support a military library. In White Lake, which I'm sure. Hopefully, if you guys, most of you know this, that has a higher percentage of aging seniors. Than our surrounding communities, okay, and so their big issue is is over the last. Three years, the county. Has put a huge burden on them. Unfortunately, the township gets to pay a little bit of the price of what the county did. Because they're receiving, they're paying for services that they necessarily didn't want or don't use or whatever, when we're talking about the parks. We're talking about the transit, those two items, so it's it's a little sour taste. And I think that that use of the messaging. Because I really don't think that it's it's that they don't want a library. She don't wanna fund the library um. I don't, I don't even want to talk about next door, that's all that created, um but just from what I know, from what I hear. That's the biggest issues, so it's not that they don't want to, it's that they're feeling the pinch. And so. You know, they're going to, if they don't like it, they're gonna go against it. You know, if they are supporters, so um I think that he's off the mark on the primary. What's gonna happen, I think you're gonna see a higher than normal primary this year. Um and that will, you know, I mean, obviously, the the bigger the turnout. The less this has a chance of passing in historical, how it works.
I don't think what the libraries ever had a village that did not pass.
No, correct, and I think that it will still pass. I I I think that it will.
I think that our biggest thing is, you know, to get the positive message out and we were looking at do, you know, and that's probably something that we probably should. Vote on at least this month or next month is. Are we going to do a renewal and restore? Are we going just for renewal?
I thought we'd already agreed. Okay.
Can I ask? What's the minimal that you that we could survive with? Renewal?
What do you consider survival?
So that we don't fall in the hole, right?
A renewal is gonna be less than what we have this year. A renewal, a straight renewal would be less than what we have this year.
And every year it goes down.
So we we would like to have a restore.
Right. And if you look at the documentation that April had given us um for um the different um. I think I only found one in here from other libraries that actually didn't do a renew and restore. There was, I think, one that just did a renewal.
And by the way, if you remember, uh for twenty twenty two was fifty eight point.
Oh, was fifty eight.
To forty one point.
I found this because I have fifty two in my head.
I was thinking we had another. I thought we had another vote in there somewhere, so.
No, we did not have another vote.
It just seemed like we.
Um so what I have asked people to to do and we can come back in because we have to. We have to decide what our verbiage is gonna look like, and I think that we need to do that in January or February at the very latest. Now that we know that um the mil- the um primary isn't until um August. But I think our deadline is the very first of April to have our verbiage to the.
On the twenty second or sixth.
Um so, which means we really need to have it. Um we need to decide if we're gonna do a renew and restore and then look at what our verbiage is and take it to the lawyer. The attorneys um.
I, okay, I thought we were doing, I thought we were on a cycle to have verbiage confirmed by the end of January meeting.
Yes, but we also, but the first thing we need to do is vote on if if what we're going to do.
Okay, well, let's vote. It's eight thirty, let's move it forward.
I'm going to make a motion. That our um our library village um. For twenty twenty six primary. States um. That we are asking the citizens for a renew and restore.
Okay. Correct. Who will second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, thanks, Eric. All in favor?
So um. I know April has sent two items to restore to either the. To restore, was it two thousand ten or to restore to? Two thousand eighteen. So I assume you're going with the two thousand eighteen amount for the point total of the point three eight six one.
Is that, yeah, hang on, I should I should have been more clear about that. Um what is twenty twenty two, this is twenty six.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought it would be the twenty twenty two. Value.
No, be renewed, this is this this document that says twenty twenty six to twenty thirty three, April. Is this the kind of, is this the correct? Document, it says um. At renewed at the reduced rate of three point six zero three mils. And a restore and to restore lost mileage increased by the amount of point zero two five eight.
That's uh in the chart he sent, that's that's renewing to two twenty eighteen, there was also another renew and restore twenty ten amount of a full point. In the chart, yeah.
Yeah, in the chart, so I just wanna make sure that. We need to have this discussion, that's a good point, so that because um this doesn't come up to a full points. Full four, right? Yeah, so. When this, so you're saying in two thousand and ten, the very first time that we did this village. It was point four.
Yes.
In two thousand and eighteen. It was um.
They did a straight renewal.
We did a straight renewal. Okay, not so that it ended up being point, it ended up being point three eight six one.
So was twenty twenty two to point four?
Okay, yes. Right, we have three, one's perpetual and then we have these other two, right, so um.
Well, did we go back to the original?
No.
Of that one? Okay.
We did a renew and restore.
If we're telling people we're not increasing the tax.
Right, we're technically increasing the tax if we go back to two thousand and ten.
If you do a restore.
No.
If we restored it two thousand and ten instead of two thousand and eighteen.
We're not raising the rate, it's still.
But we are raising the rate. Two thousand and eighteen.
What the the last thing they voted on was point three eight six. Four, we raised that rate, if we're saying, no, you.
They said just to point four.
I'm I'm not taking a position, I'm just saying, if if we're gonna go out and say you said yes to this already and they said yes to point four and they said yes to point three eight six. Why would we not? I don't think we'd get away with it like that.
I'm just saying, that's what the words are.
Right. The original was point four.
And what we're operating on now is something less than point three eight?
What we're, it's three point six, because um it's point three six.
Okay.
Okay, so um.
So we're gonna go back to what we they voted yes on last.
Well, that was saying.
Yes, no, that's what we're saying.
Right, does Becky wanna go, do we say we wanna go to the point four?
You all said no.
No, we haven't said that yet.
I don't vote, but you all said no, just sitting here talking, we didn't vote.
We haven't voted, we're having this discussion.
I'm just trying to clarify what range she had.
I know, I just don't think we need to talk about it three times, I think we just said, okay, we don't like the point four, let's go with the point three eight and let's move forward.
I don't think anybody said that, though, I think we have to have this discussion, Jen.
What you're talking about and what I'm hearing, because I don't vote and I don't do that, I hear. Something different than you do, and what I heard was that nobody wanted to do point four, you didn't think you could sell it. That's what I heard, I'm just trying to.
I don't think we can go back and um if we say we wanna go to point four, which obviously I would love to do, I don't think we can call it a renew and restore.
The restore is not.
I think it might be easier to sell at point three eight six million. And then, you know, we have that that like Dave said, we could just say, just no rate increase.
This is not a rate increase um.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to revise my.
Would you like me to go back to the attorney? Is going back to point four, just a renew, still just a renew and restore or? Does that mean some or is that something different?
Well, I think perception and transparency are important, and if that's what we're gonna go for, let's do the point three eight and not talk about it. Just say that's what it is.
Karen wants to save one that's four, that same thing, I'm just not sure.
So I'm gonna play devil's advocate.
That's what I was trying to do, Eric.
Go for it too.
What's the minimum?
I think based on that, my opinion is that we don't wanna go for the maximum. For somewhere that's either minimum or the minimum plus, like whatever that middle ground is. The maximum we have to rule out, simply because it's it puts us in jeopardy. I think I think minimum two, minimum two, minimum plus.
How about play the bigger devil's advocate, so let's just say a fail. What does that position put us in? Okay, so can you put a dollar approximate, I mean, you can run a.
Well, why would we do that at this meeting, we when someone could say, hey, you said you could get by with this, why am I paying?
I don't know if we could, we would we'd be reducing staff, we'd be reducing hours.
Yeah, I mean, you couldn't do it, um you do it, you'd have to.
Doesn't pass in uh why we do it in the primary, if it doesn't pass in August, we'll try again in October.
Yeah, sure, but you have better chances that it'll pass in August than.
So um and and I, so I probably need to amend my um. My motion to say that um for the twenty twenty six a library mileage proposal. I make the motion that we do a renewal of the current point three six oh three mils. With a um a a restore of point zero two five eight. Which is what our um.
Can we just say twenty eighteen levels?
We could say the twenty eighteen levels for for the purpose of 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 the motion.
Yes.
Okay.
That's a legal terminology, we don't have to agree.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Becky, for raising that.
To just clarify something now in our discussion. So essentially, there would be no increase, there would be the whatever they're paying now. Uh thank you.
Okay.
Can we vote? All in favor?
I.
Hi.
Five yes votes. All right, thank you, Becky, that was a very good point. All right. Uh, as far as discussion goes, I'm sure the township would like an answer sooner rather than later. Is there anything we still need to send over in an email? To Anthony through April? Do we have any questions still unanswered? Or can we say yes, we're willing to be considered to be a polling station beginning in twenty twenty seven election cycle?
I, for one, while I. I know we partner with the township and all of that, I. Would like to see something in writing in some, in some fashion, that says that they'll bring porta potties and generators, should those things fail?
Okay, then.
Just even numbering letters in to April.
Yes.
Okay, I, I agree.
I think, I think at the minimum, we need that, because I don't wanna be on the hook for that. As a library.
So April's going to ask for that, okay?
Well, one of the things that we should think about is they need to give us a logistical plan.
Yeah.
I mean, where they will rope off.
Mm hmm.
Outside.
Right.
Where that will be, how, so we can minimize any impact on our front end. Okay, that's poor, in the store out there, that's, that's.
Or do we need to say we'd like to make that information?
You come in the front door, you come right through here. You know, you go back out there.
Yeah, could be part of that.
Right, cause that's a vulnerable safety issue, and the, the, right, um.
And accessibility.
So, you know, um, and I didn't wanna bring it up earlier. When he was here and talk about it, I actually thought he would have had a better presentation. Uh, actually, I thought both of them would have had a better presentation, if you ask me, but, um, back to, like, so they're gonna pay us. They're not gonna get to use the room free, are you? Cause you charged somebody else to use. Well, I'm just throwing that out.
Thinking, but it, uh, uh, that was a question we should have asked, I don't think that they pay people. And pay public entities to use their space for them.
I'm just curious. I'm asking it as.
Valid question.
Do they pay you? What, what they've done is, is that you can't rent this room out that day.
Okay, fine, let's just make a list, can we just make a list for April to send over? Do we get paid?
Sure.
I'm really, I'm really not understanding the atmosphere to my question.
Are you gonna, are we gonna get paid? Are we going to have a?
It's a lost revenue, lost potential revenue, I'm just looking at.
I also think that, yes, and, but I also think it's really good advertising for the library.
I do like to traffic to lighter, I do, I absolutely love it, we do kinda have to have a fan.
Man, I think about when I was at Oxbow, they had a little free library up front, I was like, oh, they have a little free library up front, we need to hire more. And I think about what they would do in a real library, in that circumstance.
Some of those people don't ever go to the library, exactly, would bring them in.
So I, so the publicity i- in itself, I think is worth.
Mm hmm.
Is, is, is definitely worth it.
Okay.
So.
So like, what are the items that should be part of the memorandum?
I, I, I agree that Mike's question should be answered at first.
Which one?
I'll meet again with.
Becky, which one?
All these questions. Do we, do we get paid porta potties, generators, and we need all this in a move, and I will bring you in here and say, let's look at it, let's discuss it. And we'll get it all written down and bring that back.
I think you missed the plan for moving people through the process.
Yeah.
Yeah, the logistics.
Logistics, he's gonna have to work on that with.
Definitely.
Right.
First getting.
That's true, that's why I asked, what's your drop dead date?
Yeah.
Cause really, that gives us a lot of. Room to.
Well, he should be able to answer this when we can decide to send it somewhere.
He should have had it all ready today, I swear, but it was a cheap work. And so we laid out.
Well. Honestly, probably most places get asked, they think they don't have a choice, and, and they think, okay, it'd probably be good for us, and blah, 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 blah.
Okay.
I think it'll be good to have him come back and just come and I to walk through it, um, but I, I have experience with that at Novi, and we did, we were a polling place there. We did not have a generator, and a couple times had people lined up. And we had sliding doors, we had to bring them and circle them into the library and. Uh, so.
Yeah.
So you're saying you don't have to do that, but really, that was just the path, the library's path is not responsible, right?
Okay. So.
Okay, so.
Is this something we wanna vote on? That, that we've moved forward with a memorandum, or that?
Not just business. Okay, we have that in old business for next month?
Yeah.
Yes.
So potentially she'll have it restored and writing.
Okay.
I think a memorandum.
I have one silly question about the elections and the political leaders. And I wouldn't belabor that conversation any longer than it used to be, but. When it comes to things like enforcement, like, you know, there's the, you, you can't be a certain, you can't be a certain distance from that, who enforces that?
Anthony.
The poll watchers.
Anthony. They do. Anthony, yes, of course, so his, his people.
Yes.
Yeah, they're there, they're, they're, they have officers that sit there and administer the, the, all of that, and there are people who answer questions when there are challenges. Sometimes we send people right to the township and say, take it up with them.
His town, his deputy clerk.
There'll be somebody.
Is the enforcer of, of that day.
Okay.
He travels precinct to precinct.
Okay.
Have you seen where they put the?
So I stopped them at Dublin. Cause that costs us a lot of money, does, you know, the school district, cause I live in that Wollongong School District, which is the very, the smallest, I didn't realize that White Lake has five school districts, but anyway.
Yeah.
It's crazy, thank.
Townships in, in, in Michigan.
Yeah, and so, um, brand new concrete, and he pulls out his upside down spray can marker, and I'm like, you're not really gonna do that, are you? And he said, I have to.
Yeah.
I'm like, I'm brand new concrete?
Yeah, no, they, they.
He did, by the way.
They, 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 they mark out the, uh, hundred yard or fifty feet or whatever it is.
Wasn't necessary. But they enforce it, and they enforce it well, and it's not a big deal.
They must have to, I can't say that I've ever noticed it myself.
Well, they have people who just like drive around and all they do is, are you guys doing it? Okay, do you need any help?
Got it.
They bring us coffee and donuts in the morning, you know.
Put that in the memory.
Yeah.
After we, it's, it's a really great idea.
Yeah.
Um, here, absolutely, just like we have with friends, back to the friends.
Yes.
Okay.
Just one question, so, anything more you're ready? Old business, on you, we want to do with that.
How about a cost of continuing on with, uh, Mr. Forsmore?
Well, we need to, we also need to decide what our verbiage is gonna be, so I think we need to, we truly.
So I'll launch discussion.
Absolutely, until, until we have the verbiage listed, it's gotta stay in the old business.
I agree.
And what do you wanna see from me on the launch discussion next month?
Um, verbiage? Like a straw man?
Uh, well, you may just start. Probably, um.
She's got some verbiage in the.
The ones that we saw already?
In the quarter.
Right, okay.
Yeah. Uh, I don't know if we wanna talk about it through the finance committee, but I'm pretty sure when we did this the last time. We decided we wanna do a renew or restore, and I think that the verbiage actually. I think Denise gave us a sample, and we reviewed it, and then it went to the lawyer. And then the lawyer came back and said, this is, you know, what we think that.
I don't remember why it was different than the life, the fire and.
They didn't think what the fire and town, and, and, our lawyers didn't think that what the, they were running a fine line of whether they were being honest.
Oh.
The only difference I saw though.
It's so noticeable.
It was just literally the total amount of both not to exceed. Point three six eight mil was not, that, that line was not in the fireplace, that's the only thing that's different. And I did not see that in many of the library ones she also shared.
Right. And for some reason, our lawyers decided it needed to be there. There were several in, in the ones that said not to exceed.
Mm hmm.
In the ones that she gave us from other libraries.
I thought there was, I, I thought it was more.
But I think that if you would come back with, um, now that you know. That what we're going to. Ask for, if you would come back with a sample, even if it's what it was last time, um. Or, or. Or if there's one, uh, we can look at it for the finance committee and look at ones we might like better from other libraries, and then, um, you can come back and. Present that to the board, and then we can have it presented to the, to the attorneys to clean up.
Okay, so I'll come to the finance committee and we'll kind of talk about and finalize it, and then we'll bring it here.
Yes, and then it should, and then in January, it could go to the lawyers.
Okay.
Okay, we can approve it in February and have it, um, sent to the clerk's office in March.
Okay. And we think that'll, that'll satisfy the August primary.
I think we have to, I think last time we made sure that it was. In, I'd have to go back, but I think.
I think it was.
So you wanna leave enough time from when you take it there to make sure that there's time to make corrections.
Absolutely.
And that nobody misses a submission deadline.
That's the biggest thing.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
He stated, if you weren't prepared to go, okay, kind of get going with your knowledge stuff. That mid-May was gonna be the time to get your ballot language in, I bet he seems awkward.
We, we did it a lot earlier the last time.
Yeah.
She was scared, that scared me.
Yeah, right.
So the, the, the language will go to Anthony, right, not to, to help.
Well, actually, we don't have to send it to Anthony, legally, we do not have to, we do, but we, it can go directly to the county.
Okay. Cause it's only on the township ballot.
Just like when we run for election, we don't have to give Anthony anything technically.
When I ran for this position, I could not file at the county. I had to file.
You're supposed to be able to come and file at the county.
I filed my financial stuff, but I filed my actual after David.
Mm hmm.
Here.
Okay, so, um.
I tried to.
But we will go through Anthony. To submit all of our documentation to the county.
Okay.
Okay.
Is it good on your checklist over there?
Oh, we got it.
Uh, and the, obviously, the major behavior will. Once you get that.
So we're still waiting on that, the attorney.
Yeah.
Yes, we should begin any day.
Okay, so that wraps up old business?
Yep, we already talked about the.